Good evening. Welcome to the forty-second meeting of the one hundred and forty-third council of the city of Saint Thomas. Our first order of business this evening is appointment of the presiding officer. I have motion that council appoint councillor Herbert as presiding officer for this meeting of council, moved by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Gibson. All those in favor? I'm sorry, I'm not seeing all the hands. Sorry, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the vote of support. Are there any disclosures of interest from the members? Seeing none? Next item, please.
Next order of business of the minutes, I have a motion that the minutes of the meeting held on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three be confirmed, moved by councillor McCully, seconded by councillor Kohler.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. So our next order, I believe, is the deputations for elder abuse Elgin from Bonnie Rowe. Good evening. Good to see you again. So, and you're right up to the microphone there. So, thank you for this, I'm sure, this presentation. I've read it. Interesting. So, thank you.
If you could just press the button.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present a strategy that could address elder abuse in Saint Thomas. My name's Bonnie Rowe. I've been a volunteer with elder abuse Elgin for twenty-five years. I am currently the past chair, and I do want to acknowledge that we have some supporters in the gallery as well. We've requested this time to share with council a new strategy that's called, and it should be on the screen, but... So, the document that we're going to talk mostly about is called Future Us: A Roadmap to Elder Abuse Prevention. Last year, we visited Mayor Preston and presented a copy of this document to him, and we promised at that time to come back to the full council to share the information. So I just wanted to let you know what I hope to talk about over the next ten minutes. We'll start with a really basic definition of elder abuse, talk about how we are seeing that in Saint Thomas, a little bit about who elder abuse Elgin is, and then we'll talk about the Future Us strategy and how municipalities can help. So the World Health Organisation defines elder abuse as a single or repeated act or lack of appropriate action that occurs in any relationship where there is an expectation of trust, and that causes harm or distress to an older adult. So highlighting that it's an act or a lack of action, so a type of neglect, occurs in any relationship where there's trust. So that's friends, family, neighbours, and it causes harm or distress. So it's not scams, although scams are very important, and we work with the city police and the OPP to address that issue, but that is not elder abuse. So these are the forms of elder abuse that you might see. And so in the city, we see seniors who, whose abusers have taken money or property, they've maybe taken over their home or their bank accounts for the abuser's use. We see in seniors neglected to the point where they have no food in their home, are isolated from their family and their social networks, seniors who are physically abused, and nearly always there is emotional abuse, so threats for harm, or "I'm going to put you in a home," or "I'll never let you see your grandchildren again," things like that. So that's just some examples of what we see in Saint Thomas. So how prevalent is it? Ten percent of older adults experience abuse or neglect. And that is a ballpark figure because it is very under-reported. So based on our last census data, that means that there will be three thousand three hundred seniors in Elgin County that are being abused at any given time, and the city of Saint Thomas would have approximately half that number. So that's, that's the numbers that we're talking about at any year. And, as I said, it's under-reported for lots of reasons, which we won't go into here. But it's interesting that in the next fifteen years, seniors will increase by sixty-eight percent. So it's only going to get worse, and we feel the time to act is now. So who's elder abuse? We're a nonprofit group. We want to address the issues of elder abuse, and we use, and we address it through education, advocacy, and liaison with community members. So we consult with a number of different groups, including in the city here, the city police and the social services, social housing department are members of elder abuse Elgin. And our vision is that we'll have an Elgin County where seniors have a strong voice, feel safe and respected. Our goals are there. We communicate with many different local partners, and we've been in Elgin County for thirty years trying to address this issue. So it's, it's something that we're passionate about. We advocate for improved services for seniors that are being abused. We connect with the Elder Abuse Prevention Ontario Network, as well as other networks around the province. Not all counties have an elder abuse network. But ours has been here for thirty years. And we do have a case consultation committee, so that is a group that can be called together to give advice to care providers that are having some challenges trying to address an issue, or they can also give advice to seniors themselves. We receive no regular funding from any government or non-government organisation. So obviously, that means that we spend a lot of time writing grants, and we have been successful in carrying, receiving some grants and carrying out some really good public awareness campaigns. Also, our partners all pay a membership fee if they can. And so with that and a little bit of donations, we are able to hire a coordinator for a few hours a month just to help with the administrative work. This is our community response to try to address those goals. We do meet four times a year to discuss the projects that are currently underway and the things that people are seeing in their day-to-day work, and any strategies that we can manage to do to address those issues. And the case consultation committee I've mentioned. We promote the provincial senior safety line as a helpline that may be useful to seniors and those that care about them. So that's a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five day a year, safety line in over two hundred languages. We offer educational events to various interested organisations and groups of seniors. So this is a list of our community partners. You can see that we have a good representation from healthcare, social services, law enforcement, and many seniors. We'd love to have someone from city council on there as well, if that is something that is possible. It's just another way for you to see what we are trying to do. So the Future Us, it's a roadmap to elder abuse prevention in Canada. The title acknowledges that we're all going to be a senior someday, and there are opportunities now for everyone to contribute to positive change. It was a pan-Canadian document that was created last year by a collaborative of experts and advisers, and the Canadian Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse took the lead on that. And I do want to note that elder abuse Elgin was part of that strategy. So we participated in a local work group that fed ideas up to that document. So we do heartily endorse this document. The website is there, and we encourage you to have a read of it. It gives a much more thorough examination of the current state of elder abuse across Canada and how ageist attitudes and systems create inequities for seniors that allow abuse to occur. And then it highlights ways that everyone can help. And it's, it's a great document because it talks about how even citizens, various organisations, communities, researchers, governments, politicians and bureaucrats can help. And because of time constraints, I'm just going to talk about governments tonight, but I do hope that you will have a look at that because there are some really concrete ideas for how politicians and bureaucrats can help. So Future Us recommends that governments can recognise elder abuse as a priority issue and establish a strategy to address it. And starting with the federal government, they can endorse Future Us and fund the national elder abuse network, the Canadian network. And the federal government can financially incent provinces and territories to establish networks. And then the province can recognise elder abuse as a priority issue and fund provincial networks. So the Ontario Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse, it receives very unstable funding. As does the senior safety line. And they can incent municipalities to establish local elder abuse networks. There are many reasons why some areas do not have elder abuse networks, and we can certainly understand those because we have struggled over the years to keep ours going. So municipalities can recognise elder abuse as a priority, establish, if it's not already in place, and financially sustain local networks who will carry out the community engagement and the education and training on elder abuse in the community. So if Future Us and elder abuse Elgin has five aspirational, five-year goals, I should say, and we endorse these goals. We've seen ideas come and go over the years, but this roadmap, we really feel lays out what is a viable option to address this issue across our province. So those goals are that elder abuse is recognised as a priority issue in every province and territory, and with a strategy, that elder abuse prevention networks are established and funded at the local, provincial and federal levels, and that ongoing public education is delivered through elder abuse prevention networks. So how can you help? You can endorse the Future Us roadmap. You can make elder abuse prevention a priority in the city of Saint Thomas, and you can work with your federal and provincial colleagues to fund this local network. I'm not going to go into the details, but if you do go to that website, you will find on page twenty-five a cost-sharing plan that is not outrageous, and it is a starting point for the discussions. So on behalf of the three thousand three hundred seniors within this county who are experiencing abuse, I want to thank you for giving us this time, and I want you to think about how you might be able to help. Thank you.
Right on. Thank you. Are there any questions from the members? Councillor Peters?
Thanks very much, Mr Chair, and Bonnie, thanks for your presentation. What does someone do if I'm concerned about the wellbeing of a neighbour? That I have a suspicion that something might be up, I'm not seeing the individual...
That is a challenge.
Is it?
It is.
So I'm just curious, what would you advise someone to do if they were concerned about the wellbeing of a neighbour?
So if you have an opportunity to have a discussion with them in a safe way, so if you're suspecting that, let's say it's their son that's abusing them, pick a time when you can visit that neighbour when he's not around, and ask if they're okay. It will take time. It will take a, this is part of the, one of the education pieces that we do with the general public, is everybody can help, even, even if it's to say, "I'm with you, do you, do you need some help? I'm worried about you?" And then just listening is so important because isolation is one of those things that makes it worse. In terms of beyond that, this is one of the things that we are mandating for, is someone in the community who could be a specialist in that area. We've seen over and over that seniors may go to one organisation, and that organisation will manage what they can within their mandate, but it often has several different components to it, and they may not be able to address the whole person. And so they fall between the cracks, and we've seen that happen a lot. So, you know, you can certainly start with the police. You could, when we have done this, both the city and the OPP police are very good about just doing a wellness check to check on them, and just coming to their door and just saying, "We're worried about you," can, can start the conversation as well. But I don't want to, I don't want to discourage you from, from speaking to that neighbour yourself, and just, just opening that conversation. And it sometimes will take several conversations before you can say, "Is there some way I can help? Can I contact somebody for you?" or whatever.
Thank you. Any other questions from the members? Councillor Wookiee?
Thanks very much. I have a question for you. In your experience, generally speaking, what percentage is of this abuse is from someone who has a power of attorney over somebody else? Is that like twenty percent, twenty-five percent?
I don't know in terms of power of attorney, but I do know that financial abuse is at least fifty percent of our abuse cases. So financial abuse in some way, either through a power of attorney or a neighbour befriending someone and asking for money and pressuring and so forth, so.
I was just thinking, I was just going to ask you, and what percentage do you find are family members and how many are neighbours or other people? Like, what is your experience?
I don't know that I could give a percentage, but family members are often the issue, for sure. Certainly since COVID, we have seen the numbers increase dramatically. In, in fact, the senior safety line said that their numbers increased by two hundred and fifty percent over the course of those two years when everyone was isolated in home. And it's because, you know, of the isolation, the fact that people were unemployed and hurting, and family members came home to live with mum, and then started using her funds and, you know, went downhill. Mental health and addictions are also factors that increase that abuse within families.
Yes, and just supplementary, we do have, like, just, you might know this, but we have community grants, and this sounds like an organisation that would benefit from, whether it's, even if it's like, you know, fridge magnets with the number on it to call, something like that, like, but I encourage you, if you have not done, to, to look at that programme. If you need help, any of us can help and staff can help. Okay?
Appreciate that. And I was just looking today and when those were, in August and January, I believe it is, but yes, we, it's just a matter of having the resources to do the applications and that sort of thing, but absolutely, we will and will be definitely keeping that in mind. Thank you.
Any further comments? Well, thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. You give a lot of stats in there that personally I wasn't aware of that shows obviously there's something going on out there with elder abuse, and you have a great team. You have, I think, what, twenty groups on the team? So I think you, hopefully you keep working at it and you'll be successful. So anyway, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. And I should have mentioned, thank you to the city for flying, flying our World Elder Abuse Awareness flag this past year. That was super. Probably do it again if that works out. So every little bit helps. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind just turning off the mic, John. Your worship council will now resolve itself into committee the whole to deal with following business. First committee this evening is strategic direction and development. First item relates to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four winter preparation for homelessness. I have a motion that report SCSS sixteen twenty-three relating to the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four winter preparation for homelessness be received for information, moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor McCully.
Questions or comments? Sorry, blurring. Councillor Sand, Baldwin Sands.
Thank you. I do have two questions, if I could, for Ms Nielsen. Very much, I'm very grateful for this report. It was very well laid out, easy to follow. I learn so much every time one of your reports comes, and I'm very grateful. But on the last part of the report, you talk about wrapping around services of extreme cases of those who can't live in congregate settings and having to utilise even our local motels for some extreme cases. Could you tell us a little bit more about that, please? And then I have a second question.
Thank you very much for your comments and your question, councillor Baldwin Sands. So yes, in extreme situations and vetted through a group of community stakeholders, there are occasions where someone is unable to access emergency shelter and congregate sleeping arrangements, for example, a family with small children or a person who might be living with a significant mental or physical health impairment that makes it challenging to sleep in a group environment. And in those situations, we do have a group that's come together, who can flag that situation for a group of stakeholders to have a conversation and determine whether or not a motel stay might be appropriate for that person. In the event it's decided that it is appropriate, there would be supports attached. And in some situations, unfortunately, it may be determined that it's not an appropriate placement. For example, if there's concerns that there could be significant damages to the room, that comes at an increased cost to providing that support, sometimes substantial. And it also comes at a cost potentially with our relationships with local motel operators where one situation could potentially damage that relationship for any future situations that may come forward. So it's a matter that's very carefully reviewed and vetted on a case-by-case situation.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. My second question is about the use of the Warwick Conservation Area. Here in Saint Thomas, there are many members of council where we're on Kettle Creek or Catfish Creek Conservation Authority. How, and I've been to Warwick, and I don't see, because they don't have a spring water, they don't have a Dalewood Conservation Area where people go to camp, but what services do they have there that could possibly be utilised? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. So this is a partnership that's been established between West Elgin Community Health Centre and E M Warwick Conversation, Conservation Area. I think the difference here is that E M Warwick has cabins that they've leased at a very affordable cost to West Elgin Community Health Centre, where West Elgin will attach those supports through their Rural Homelessness System Navigator, as well as a group of volunteers to support people in that area who may be experiencing housing instability and not wishing to engage in services here in Saint Thomas. So that organisation and partnership has been able to establish spaces that could support families, singles, couples, people with pets. There are considerations, for example, how remote the location is. So transportation is something that needs to be vetted, and appropriateness of that placement for that person.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councillor Clark?
Thank you. I was just wondering a little bit more details on the makeup of, of the people that are using the, the resources in terms of male, female versus female families, couples. Just, I know that the, the list changes, but I've just wondered in general.
Sure. Thank you for your question, councillor Clark. So speaking just on behalf of the emergency shelter system here in Saint Thomas and the by-name list, which may or may not include women who are accessing support through the violence against women sector, typically our, our highest population of people served are single males, followed next by single females, and then families. So in our emergency shelter, for example, we do tend to see more need and demand for our male beds than we do female, which is what gave us the opportunity to re-evaluate that female congregate space and look at building in that additional flex room.
Thank you. Any further questions, councillor McCully, then councillor Wookiee?
No question. Just a comment. Thank you for the report. It was, it was very eye-opening, and the level of collaboration happening with other community partners is just astonishing to me, and I just want to commend you for the report and all of the great work that's happening.
On behalf of our very collaborative community, thank you, councillor McCully. It's a privilege of me to be up here to receive your appreciation, but I do that on behalf of some significant work that happens out of social services and throughout our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Wookiee.
Thanks very much. There are people that are going to see this, see this tonight or otherwise, and they don't have the report. So I'd like you, if you could, just comment upon, like, how many, what does the temperature have to be for this to be initiated? How many extra beds are there? Just, just generally, like, you know, like, a little bit of a summary of what's in here, just for the general public's knowledge, so they can know what's going on with this report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wookiee, for your question. Happy to elaborate on the report. With regard to the weather threshold, there will be a public announcement made by Southwest Public Health that shares the changes that they're making locally. Up until this winter, the threshold has been minus thirty. My understanding is that that will come down by at least ten degrees, and I expect that that announcement will be made very soon. In terms of what we've done to prepare in our community for people experiencing homelessness during the colder weather, really focuses on maximising use of existing resources. So what we've been able to do is work with Ian around any opportunity to increase bed capacity. So they will be moving from forty beds to forty-four beds. Additionally, on the main floor of our emergency shelter, we operate overflow space, and that will be increasing from ten individuals up to fifteen individuals. And we're in the very early stages of exploring opportunity to have up to nine crash cots in the basement of the inn as needed. Additionally, we've worked closely with Youth for, Youth for Christ to look at how we can staff up their respite area to be able to use that space more often for youth between the ages of sixteen and twenty-four, which is more appropriate for those youth, and also will reduce some of the demands and pressure on emergency shelter, freeing up spaces for our adult population who may be experiencing homelessness, and then working very closely in partnership with all of our supportive housing providers to ensure that every opportunity to have a housing outcome for people experiencing homelessness is absolutely happening so that we have a very clear picture of what the need is on our streets. And it is looking, as mentioned in the report, through all of the involved stakeholders, that the need and demand for resources for unsheltered homelessness will be much less this year than in previous years. And so in terms of setting up our community to be ready to support folks, we do feel confident in this plan. We will be monitoring it very closely and adjusting and tweaking as we need to, to ensure that folks have an opportunity to come inside.
Thank you. Any further questions? So we have a motion on the floor, all in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, carried. Next item, please.
Next item relates to the third report of the twenty twenty-three Site Plan Control Committee. I have a motion that report PD forty-eight twenty-three relating to site plan application numbers SBC oh-five twenty-three, SBC oh-eight twenty-three, SBC oh-nine twenty-three, SBC eleven twenty-three, SBC thirteen twenty-three, and SBC fourteen twenty-three be received for information. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? We'll vote on the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, carried. Next item, please.
Next item relates to draft plan approval for the property at twenty-one Park Avenue. I have a motion that report PD forty-nine I have a motion that report PD 4923 relating to draft plan approval for file 34 CDM 23501 be received for information. And further, the council approved the draft plan of vacant land condominium file 34 CDM 23501 for lands owned by Novi Construction Limited and Walter Ostigek and Sons Limited, subject to conditions, including the requirement for the owner to enter into a condominium agreement with the City of St. Thomas with respect to the installation of municipal services and financial, environmental, administrative, and other matters relating to the development of the plan. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel Kohler.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Next item, please.
Next item relates to notice of a public meeting to take place on November the 29th via Teams. And this is from the Site Plan Control Committee to consider applications relating to a proposed commercial building development at 121 South Edgeware Road and to amend approved site plan to permit potential industrial and commercial uses at 25 Dennis Road. Last item for this committee is notice of passing of a zoning bylaw was received from the municipality of Central Elgin to permit only single detached residential and accessory uses on a newly created lot severed from 424 489 Southdale Line just west of Lyndale Avenue. I worship if there's no further items from the members under this committee. We'll now move into a community engagement and services. First item relates to the renewal of the purchase service agreement for Mission Systems Development Corporation. I have a motion that report SESS 1523 relating to the purchase of service agreement for web hosting and support be received for information. And further, the council approve entering into the amended 2023 24 purchase service agreement as attached to report SESS 1523. And further, that a bylaw be prepared authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute a purchase of service agreement amendment with Mission Systems Development Corporation. Moved by Counsel Clark, seconded by Counsel Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry. Next item, please.
Unless there are any further items from the members under this committee. We'll now move into infrastructure and civic operations. The first item relates to the First Avenue and Edward Street Intersection Review. I have a motion that report ES 6123 relating to the First Avenue and Edward Street Intersection Review be received for information. Moved by Counsel Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counsel Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Counselor Laurie Baldwin Sands.
Thank you. I would like to thank staff for this report. I am absolutely amazed at the increase in volume of traffic. And I think with the traffic volume will continue to increase and look forward to 2027 when this is looking for it to be a completely new intersection at that time. Thank you very much for the report.
Thank you. Any further questions? We have a motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, carried. Next item.
Next item relates to Fairview Avenue and Talbot Street Intersection Improvements. I have a motion that report ES 6723 relating to the Fairview Avenue and Talbot Street Intersection Improvements be received for information. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel McCauley.
Questions or comments? Counsel Peters, then Counsel Clark.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. I don't agree with this report. Someone is going to get killed going southbound or seriously hurt, maybe it was a little extreme, seriously hurt going southbound on Burwell Road and trying to make a left turn. I realize the bridge is probably going to come out at some point, but that could be five years away, as is pointed out in the report. I think with all the construction that is going to be taking place in the North End with Highbury next year, South Edgeware next year. We need to look at signalizing a left turn for eastbound onto Talbot off of Burwell Road. I use an intersection regularly, the intersection of Commissioners in Wellington in London. North southbound traffic gets a green light and an advanced light. And then they have separate lanes. So if I was going westbound on Commissioners to go southbound on Wellington and back to St. Thomas, I have a dedicated light. And then the same holds true for traffic moving eastbound on Commissioners across Wellington. I just think that the sight lines are so bad at that corner. And I've, I can tell you, I've tried to make the left turn myself. And it is like you're sort of inching out and hoping and looking and seeing what's coming over the hill. And then you take a deep breath and hold your breath and make the left turn eastbound on the Talbot. So I don't agree with the sport. I think we need to take interim steps to provide left turns.
Thank you, Counsel Clark.
Thanks. I was just wondering as part of the project, whether or not we've making any headway on the extension of Park Ave through to Talbot, which would alleviate some of the traffic when all this construction is going to happen.
Thank you. Do we have anybody here to answer that question or would like to answer? Thank you.
Through the mayor to Counselor Clark. I'm just trying to, I'm still getting familiar with the city of St. Thomas. So the extension of Park Ave through to Talbot was your question, right? I'm just trying to locate Park Ave. Okay.
Have you got it, Mark? It's west of Fairview and right now it's bisected by former railway lands.
Correct. And I believe that that property is owned through. I can't remember the name of the company, TBR Developments. In order for us to be able to punch a road through there, we would need them to work with us in order to do that. But the other piece too would be that any intersection in that section or any additional connection in that section of Talbot would be a right in, right out. We wouldn't allow left hand turns in that section. Similar to what we have on the opposite side of the road for the entrance into the smart centers there by TD is a right in, right out.
Yep, supplementary.
Yes, I just wondering if we could just do an update on that file and just see if we're making any progress with purchasing that land.
Yes, go ahead.
Through the mayor to Counselor Clark, I can advise that we do have a site plan or at least conceptual conversations happening with TBR about developing that area. So that's helpful in in terms of any type of acquisition that we would need for that.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Wookiee.
Thanks very much. As far as getting rid of that bridge, you know, good news, bad news here is that's, you know, it'll make traffic much better, safe for everything else. The bad news is I'd really like to see and lots of us like to see a path going right along the railway lands heading east out of St. Thomas. So the benefit of having the bridge there is we can walk under the bridge. The bad news is the bridge has been a traffic disaster for, you know, 60 years. So if we got rid of that bridge and leveled it, then what would we do? And I'm not asking for an answer tonight necessarily, but just thinking out loud, what do we do to get pedestrians then across that if we want to make that into a bike path, walking path along the railway lands? If we can actually get, we can get a corridor to do that. So what do you think might be the answer to that? Or or not? Thanks. Yes?
Through the chair to Counsel Wookiee. Actually, that was one of the things that I was contemplating initially is if we were to remove that, do we replace it with just a box culvert or something like that in order to continue to have an active transportation connection through that area? My team was very creative. We didn't want to have another structure in order to maintain. So they were able to devise a active transportation connection that would work for us for people to cross Talbot and then once on the north side, be able to work their way down across the property that we own in front of format in order to get back on to basically the rail corridor, if you will, and continue the way out to the new industrial park area. So it does kind of, we do have conceptual ideas in working with the TBR developments in order to create some type of active transportation link from Queso out to the east end of the city.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thanks. Um, I'd love to see, I'd love to see that. I mean, I think we'd all love to see what that is, even just informally to 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 see, I can, I can kind of see in my head what you mean. But if we could get a little visual of that, I'd really appreciate it because this is something I'm passionate about and I just want to make sure that like, I just want to see it. I'm just curious and and that was the big downfall, I thought of this, but if we could, whether I pop into see you, whether you could just send it out to us, that'd be great. Thank you very much. Go ahead. Yes?
Through the chair, conveniently, we have a transportation master plan refresh out, and so that would be an opportunity for us to formalize more of these concepts.
Thank you. Counsel Kohler.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I I have to agree with Counsel Peters and I'd like to see something down there where we could have simultaneous advances. So you're got the advance hitting west and the advance heading heading east. And I know that would require permanent left hand turn lanes there, but I personally think it can be done. I I see this, you know, go to communities in the States all the time where they have that and it clears traffic quite fast. I I think where you look at when you're heading south from in that direction, that that lane is pretty much stalled anyways, because nobody can turn left until the light turns yellow. So nobody actually goes into that lane. So it's almost by default a permanent left turn lane because nobody actually goes in there or you get stuck behind those people. So I personally think that we could look at something like that interim until we 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 fix it because I I think I have to agree with Counsel Peters. It's it's very dangerous there.
Thank you. Counsel Gibson.
I, yeah, I I don't drive, but I do see the the hazard there. I'm just wondering if if we could make it so you can have your regular traffic swirl and then once it turns. I'm not sure which way would go, but if all four were red at one point and then follow the direction for all the right hand turns or straight through turns, you know what I mean? So at one point you would go, everyone would come to the corner and you would have a red light on your east, your east and west. So that way your north and south are traveling. So the north and south would be able to do the full advancement of a left hand turn. Then all lights would turn red. Then you would go through like a regular traffic light, single signals.
Yes.
Through the chair to Counsel Kohler and Counsel Gibson, Counsel Peters. I would advise against making any changes at this point in time. Considering the other major arterial road construction projects will have ongoing in 2024. Making any change at this point in time will likely cause significant delay for the motoring public. And so that's why the recommendation at this time is to do is to remain with the status quo for the season of 2024. And then this project will be coming forward in 2025. The only reason why it was delayed from 2024 is a result of these other major arterial road projects. So that we have a very limited number of north, south corridors, Centennial, First and Burwell, Fairview. So I don't think that would be a good idea for us to try to tinker around with dedicated left turn lanes. We'll probably see an increase because this will be part of our detour routes for for those pieces, for those other major arterial road projects. So that's why I would suggest that the recommendation, well, this is for information, but that we don't make any changes at this point for a one more construction season so that we can get in there and do the right thing at this intersection.
Thank you, Counsel Clark.
My supplementary was going to say I was going to vote against the report and and thought that because of the extra traffic, the safety concerns get worse. And as Counsel Kohler and Counsel Peters have said, that you're forced into a left hand turn waiting, you have to wait anyways. And and so I think the dedicated left hand turn would would help safety.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair to Counselor Clark. What I would suggest is as part of the detour planning for the other major arterial road projects that we have on the books for 2024, subject to council approval, of course, is that we would look at some of those pieces in terms of timing for left hand turns, if that happens to be the dominant path for some of these detour routes to help address some of those concerns.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? So we have a motion on the floor, all in favor? Two for those against? So it's not carried.
Your worship, if I may, the recommendation that was made was simply to receive the report for information. At this time, it would be beneficial if council provided some form of a direction to to the department, whether wish to receive a report concerning some of the items that were raised at tonight's meeting. If if that's wish of council.
Counsel Peters.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Well, the director just pointed out that they're going to be looking at the detour routes that are going to have to be implemented as a result of construction. My sense would be that subject to council approval, if we approve the capital budget, those tenders are going to be let very early. And perhaps even we would see construction in the ground in in early spring. So why not give the direction to staff now to start accelerating the planning of the detour routes and to try and anticipate the impact that those detour routes are going to have on that intersection. So let's accelerate the process.
Thank you. So, oh, Counsel Kohler. So the way I'm understanding it is that we did not approve the report. So I'm wondering if I say it all sender, DeBears could make a comment on what direction we should be going now with not accepting the report? What what would be your suggestion?
Through you, my presiding officer, I would suggest that if you've given direction to staff and they've received it this evening, we'll proceed and and get back to council with respect to that. By not receiving the report you've received, and I'm not the clerk, so I let the clerks speak to that issue. But by not receiving the report, you've just not received a report that was for information only.
Okay, thank you very much. So next item.
Your worship, if we've concluded the items under infrastructure, we'll now move into corporate governance and administration. First item. We have a presentation from Integris Inc. relating to the annual general meeting report and resolutions. And I believe that Mr. Hogan is present to make that presentation and share his screen.
Thank you. Welcome, Jim Hogan. Can you hear us?
I can.
Thank you. You're nice and loud. How are things down your way? Good?
Yes, doing well.
Good. Thank you very much. So you're going to make a PowerPoint presentation to council and the public. Thank you.
Is that there? You're able to see it?
Yeah.
And, okay, so.
No, we can't see it yet on our screens. Something's happening now. Yep, there we go. We have it now. Thank you.
Great. Okay. So thank you, Council Administration. Pleased to be here to give an update on our 2022 results and also walk through the AGM resolutions. So if it's there still, so we have the there the number of subsidiaries we have. Integris Power Lines is the core business. That's where we distribute electricity and that's where we have the majority of our business. Integris Power Lines is heavily regulated by the Ontario Energy Board. Level of service, price, all kinds of things. So we're very involved with the Ontario Energy Board. And something we're proud of is the Ontario Energy Board ranks all utilities as far as efficiency. And we are in the first group of efficient utilities in the province. So as you can imagine, health and safety is very important to us, high risk jobs. So we focus a lot on health and safety. And we do that in partnership with the Industrial Health and Safety Association, so IHSA. And we follow. And we follow their certificate of recognition standard and, um, been, um, following that for a little while now. And we did our internal audit last year and we have a score of ninety percent. So we're managing it quite well and we have significant, um, uh, training that goes on for all of our staff. Very community-focused organization. We've donated almost four hundred, over $400,000 last year. There's a list of some of the, uh, um, the beneficiaries and then in St. Thomas, we've done the CMHA Thames Valley Addiction and Mental Health as, as long with, along with many others. As far as our employees, um, it's our greatest resource. Um, still, you know, turnover that's going on. We've had thirty recruitments, uh, last year. Nice part is six of them were internal transfers or promotions. So we are finding opportunities for our staff. You know, we have many retirements, so it's, uh, still very busy bringing in, uh, losing some long-term staff and bringing in some new talent, which is always quite good. Um, we do build relationships with many of the, uh, post-secondary education, um, institutions and we're involved in, uh, co-op programs and co-op students and, and Fanchow College is one that we, uh, we are, have been successful in using their co-op program and actually hired a couple of, uh, couple of their graduates. Our customers, we've grown by almost a thousand, so one and a half percent. Um, it's good growth. And we do a satisfaction survey annually and last year we were at ninety-three percent. So um, customers are pleased with the work that we're doing. Our capital program, uh, spend, uh, you know, a little more than fourteen million dollars. Uh, conversion programs, modernizing the system is, is a big part of what we're doing. And in there we have, you know, a list of the projects we've done in St. Thomas last year. Raven Avenue Phase Two Conversion, Highview and Wellington Underground, uh, uh, projects. Our, our Integris Services Company, that's where we have the data center and then the fiber business. Now, last year we were able to monetize the fiber, fiber business. Um, so we, we sold that and, um, last year we declared an additional $300,000 in dividends of which, uh, St. Thomas got about twenty-one percent of that, but, uh, you know, giving the shareholders their, uh, their return from that sale. The Integris Transmission, that's where we, uh, support renewable generation and we have a utility corridor. And that's goes from St. Thomas to Tilbury, it's an old rail line. To, and, um, last year we, uh, were able to have, um, negotiations with another um, partner on the corridor. So, so there's another company that will be um, using the corridor for their services. Integris will still own the corridor, but now we have three, uh, three different easements for the corridor. And for 2023, um, we will be, well, we did declare, you know, an extra three million dollar dividend, which related to, um, the earnings from that, uh, that program. That partnership. Integris Renewable, that's where we have the, uh, investment in North Kent Wind, still very strong returns. Um, we've got about a million dollars more in our returns that was originally projected at the time of the investment. So it's still working out pretty well. And then overall, our financial results, um, you know, seventy-four percent higher, um, earnings than the previous year. And as mentioned, that's the, the fiber business. The new partnership on the corridor, North Kent Wind, again, is, is surpassing its target. And then actually the, the distribution business has been uh, quite successful. A lot of that has to deal with the, uh, the customer growth that I mentioned. Um, still a strong balance sheet. So we are below the Ontario Energy Board sixty, uh, percent debt. So that's good. That, that provides us flexibility to operate the business and it allows us, uh, you know, room to, uh, to borrow and grow the company when we need to. So as far as the AGM resolutions, there's three of them. One is approving the audited financial statements from December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, and they're, uh, recommended for approval from our board. Um, the second resolution is approving, uh, the board members, uh, the Board of Directors, and this is for Integris Inc. Now, the City of St. Thomas as a shareholder appoints two members, that's Counselor Steve Wookiee and then Joe Brophy, who is an independent. But as a shareholder, uh, at the AGM, you approve all board members. And I should point out as well, on our Integris Power Lines, there are counselors, Steve Wookiee and Gary Clark that are on that board. That gets approved by the Integris Inc. I just thought, uh, council should know that we do have those other two, uh, gentlemen, uh, on our board. And then the last item for the resolution is that, uh, appointing MNP as the auditors for this year, um, uh, this year's year-end. So that's all I have and I'll answer any questions that, uh, anybody has.
Thank you very much. As usual, very detailed report. So questions or comments from members? Counselor Peters?
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. First, Jim, thanks for fixing my problem on St. Catherine Street. Appreciate that. It's all, it was all done last week. Um, the utility corridor. Uh, you know, we have the, the St. Thomas Elevated Park that, uh, ends right out there. Um, and then the corridor to Tilbury starts. It is probably illegally being used as a recreational trail by lots of different people and organizations, uh, right now. Um, is there any way that we can, uh, and I realize it's outside the city, but that uh, Integris could look at options to turn that into a, uh, not only as a utility corridor, but a, as a, as a more formal recreational corridor, or are there too many liability issues associated with that? Thanks.
Um, so thanks for that question. So, um, we have reached out to, um, a few different organizations, um, and to see, you know, if they want to purchase, purchase it outright, purchase an easement and then, and then they, they would do the trail because that's, that's their business. So, um, at this point, they, they have not, those other organizations have not, um, come forward and, and tried to put a, uh, a trail package together, um, but we're still, you know, interested in, in, uh, trying to support that. Um, and we do our best to keep the, um, I guess they're kind of illegal riders or users of, of the corridor. Um, you know, we do have many and many of the entrance areas. We do have it, uh, blocked off and we do, um, regularly drive from one end to the other end and just making sure the signs and, 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 you know, the the big cement pillars and things like that that we, that we have there to, to, um, reduce, uh, the usage we have, uh, checking on that regularly. So, um, we're, so I guess the point is we are open to, uh, having somebody partner and use that as a, as a, uh, get some other uses on that quarter.
Thank you, Counselor Clark.
Uh, thank you, Jim. The City of St. Thomas does have one dollar. Um, you know, so anytime you'd like to be bigger corporate citizens than you already are, we'd love to part, we're, partner with you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark.
Any further, oh, further questions, Counselor Wookiee? You want going to two dollars or?
No, cheap, cheap retired teacher. Um, Jim, just, uh, for the sake of the community, can you just do some general commentary about the impact of heat pumps and electric vehicles on our, on our distribution system and kind of what Integris is doing to, um, prepare for that, if you could? Thanks very much.
Okay, great. Uh, so yes, electrification of many things is, uh, something that we are studying and, and you're right, electric vehicles. Uh, there's going to be a penetration there, um, that's, that's going to be growing. Um, and then heat pumps, uh, you know, there is, uh, you know, uh, trying to, you know, have natural gas or being used less, less. So, um, we're doing many studies, uh, on, on the impact of those. Um, that's partly why we are, you know, spending as much as, as we are doing. Um, the, and I, I believe our 2024 capital, um, will be something like eighteen or nineteen million dollars, uh, because we do need to, um, make these investments. Um, you know, we're going to have more transformers out there and, and larger, the transformer larger as in, um, they would be able to handle, um, uh, more, more load. Um, so it's, it's going to be, uh, uh, you know, a challenge for us. We don't know exactly how fast we need to go, uh, but we are making all the investments so that, you know, when the customers are, are making those investments and making those choices in their home, that we'll be ready. But, uh, we are looking at significant capital over the next ten to fifteen years.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thanks, Jim, for the report. Obviously, there's a lot of work and effort goes into presenting that and it's always informative information. So thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have a motion?
Uh, yes, Your Worship. Thank you. I have a motion that council adopt the following Integris Inc. shareholder resolutions. One, the audited consolidated financial statements of Integris Inc. For the financial year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Two, the following, uh, persons appointed as directors to Integris Inc. Board. Um, Max Fandis, Pat McMahon, Alan Platus, uh, Counselor Brock McGregor, Mayor Darren Keneff, Lindsay Boyd, Don Suddeth, Counselor Steve Wookiee and Joe Brophy. And three, that MNP be appointed as the auditors for Integris Inc. For the year ending December twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Kohler.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? We have a more, oh, question? Oh, sorry. All in favor? The report, thank you. Any opposed? Carried. Or next item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Hogan, and good night.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, Your Worship, I believe you, um, may have wanted to, uh, inquire about a question relating to southwestern public health.
Thank you. I will ask the question. At our last meeting for the public health, we reintroduced, uh, uh, a report with regards to the levy and we did not accept it. So I believe I CRO Sandra DeBears will make a comment on it.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Through you, the members of council, um, the City Treasurer and I conferred after, um, your meeting. Uh, just wanted to clarify that, uh, the Treasurer brought forward a report entitled Southwestern Public Health two hundred, twenty twenty-three levy, uh, it was TR nineteen twenty-three, and the request was for you to receive the information. The report outlined that the levy increase was a requirement, um, to be paid by the city. Uh, and so it is, and I think I just wanted to be clear that in turning the report down, you did not turn down the requirement to make the levy payment. That payment has to be made. So to clarify why that payment has to be made, uh, the City Treasurer and I had a discussion, the City Treasurer spoke to Public Health, and I'll just clarify why there is an extra levy and provide you information and happy to take any questions that, that council members might have. The extra levy is considered a mandatory municipal obligation. It was approved by the Board of Health. So that funding is, um, in a seventy-thirty provincial municipal split for base funding that's provided by the ministry. But this, that funding, the additional funding that you, uh, that was approved by the Board of Health is not within that split. Uh, so, uh, this is amount above their base that is funded solely by the municipality. So City of St. Thomas, County of Algen, County of Oxford. So I just wanted to clarify, so council members were aware that while it is certainly your right and ability to turn their report down, the city does need to make that payment, uh, to public health because it was a Board of Health approval. And I'm happy to take any questions as is, as is the Treasurer.
Questions, Counselor Clark?
Uh, not a question, but more of a statement, I guess. Uh, I, can we make sure then that we include with our, um, delegation that's going to Roma that we add outside boards when we meet with the, um, with the, um, different ministers so that we can address, uh, some of the ongoing problems that we have with outside boards where their budgets far outweigh, their budget increase far outweigh what we've uh, worked hard at to, um, come in at with our budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, Counselor Kohler?
Thanks. I, I certainly support that. And I think, you know, the way I voted that way too, because other boards had made some other arrangements to try to mitigate any of those increases. And I personally, maybe the members that are on there can maybe report back to council and just let us know what efforts were made at that time to mitigate that increase within their own budget rather than passing it on.
Thank you. Any further questions? So Madam Clerk, do we require amendment to the motion or do we just move on to the next item?
Uh, no, Your Worship, but as, uh, the City Manager advised, the payment must be made. Uh, and then Counselor Clark had suggested that, uh, concerns be raised at Roma advising of uh, the situation when boards, uh, budgets outweigh the, the benefits that council were able to achieve by maintaining their own budgets.
So we're good. Next item then. Thank you.
Your Worship, unless we have any further items for corporate governance and administration, um, council will, no, sorry, we have one more item. Sorry. I just had an X through the wrong thing. Uh, the next item relates to the twenty twenty-two council remuneration and expenses. I have a motion that report TR twenty twenty-three relating to twenty twenty-two council remuneration be received for information. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor McCauley.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? On the motion? All in favor? Sorry. Carried. None opposed. Thank you.
Uh, Your Worship, unless there are any further items from the members for corporate governance and administration, uh, council will now reconvene into regular session. I have a motion that the recommendations, directions and actions of council and committee the whole as recorded in the minutes of this date be confirmed, ratified and adopted. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing on the motion, all in favor? Carried.
No reports of committees this evening. Um, we do have, uh, petitions and communications. First item relates to notice received from EDP Renewables Canada Limited of a community meeting to be held on November twenty-third, twenty twenty-three from six till eight PM at the Queso Station regarding a proposed battery storage site. And no further items on the agenda under petitions. And next we move into unfinished business of council. And Your Worship, seeing no, no items, will now move into new business of council. If there are any items. I believe Counselor Clark has an item, Your Worship.
Oh, sorry. I was reading the agenda. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, I had the opportunity to, uh, talk to Santa Claus after the, um, the parade on Saturday and he was, uh, quite pleased with all the activities that St. Thomas had. They wanted to give thanks to the Optimist Club for a wonderful parade and then the Downtown Development Board had a lot of exciting activity going on Friday night with the tree lighting. However, he was a little disappointed in our city tree and the lights. He was hoping for a little more Clark Griswold and a little less Charlie Brown. Um, and so, um, I just need some direction. Do, can we, if that was the consensus of the, of council, um, direct staff to perhaps purchase more lights and have them uh, put on before Christmas Eve? Or do I have to, uh, provide a notice of motion and go through a more formal process? And that would help get the city clerk and the city CEO off the naughty list.
Uh, Counselor Kohler?
Thanks. Actually, I'm, I'm glad Santa pointed that out because I know when I was up for the, uh, the tree lighting and the, the great event that was going on there. Just even the, the lighting of the building itself, like we can, we got a beautiful building here and if we could add to Santa's request to possibly look at how we can beautify the building with just lights, um, I think it would really help out.
Thank you. Any further comments? Oh, Sandra, sorry.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Worship. Um, thank you for those suggestions. Um, I, I don't need to get off the naughty list. I think I'm probably permanently there, but, um, I can tell you that that discussion has happened already today. I had that discussion with some stakeholders on Saturday evening about the ability to light up the building. Um, we have looked at, um, uh, you know, there are many buildings, uh, in many different communities where that lighting can happen. Uh, it's, it's not inexpensive. But if we're looking at perhaps some less expensive ways to light up the building. Um, I did get some feedback from the DDB folks and others on Saturday night about that as well. So, um, with respect to the tree, um, I actually thought there were more lights this year than last year. Uh, those are put on by Integris with the support of DDB, but I'll have a discussion with the, with the Director of Parks and Racks as, as well. There are lights though in, um, uh, Pinafore too, this year, which we haven't had before. And I do want to note too, that there's a fair amount of decorations on the streets as well, including in front of City Hall.
Counselor Clark?
And I, I do know there's a cost to go back and, um, put more lights on because the bucket. And I I do know there's a cost to go back and um put more lights on because of the bu- bucket truck and all that, but I I have heard from. Uh, a couple electrical um companies that would be willing to help support the um, the relighting if if it was needed.
Thank you, any further new business?
I just have one more question, your worship, if I could through you, um, white lights?
Colors, if uh, if anyone, if anyone passes Mrs. Dunn's Dunn Street at the entrance of uh Parkside. Right uh, right on Sunset there, that's a a great model.
Thank you, I I'll make a comment too, I I was there for the tree lighting, the crowd was unbelievable, just people everywhere, which is so nice to see that. And uh, and I don't disagree that a few more lights wouldn't have hurt, so anyway, thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Uh, your worship, unless there's any further items of new business or uh from council, I'd like to get off that naughty list as well. So uh, if we can move into bylaws, I have a motion that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws. Moved by Counsel Peters, seconded by Counsel Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? None, seeing none? Oh, oh, sorry, my bad, all in favor, thank you, carried.
I have a motion by Counsel Peters, seconded by Counsel Baldwin Sands, that the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee of the whole and read a second time.
Questions or comments, all in favor? Seeing none, carried.
First bylaw, please?
First bylaws, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the twentieth day of November, two thousand and twenty three.
Questions or comments, seeing none, all those in favor, that's carried, next bylaw, please?
Second bylaws, a bylaw to establish a long term care homes committee of management for the city of St. Thomas for Valley View Home.
Questions or comments, seeing none, all those in favor, that's carried, next bylaw, please?
Third bylaws, a bylaw to assume certain lands as part of the public highway known as Edward Street, this is near Brahms Woodcraft Inc.
Questions or comments, seeing none, all those in favor, that's carried, next bylaw, please?
Uh, that concludes the bylaws, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, I rise and report the successful passing of the three bylaws.
Have a motion by Counsel Peters, seconded by Counsel Baldwin Sands, that the report of council and committee of the whole on the three bylaws be received and adopted. The same be read a third time engrossed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
All in favor, motion for, carried, thank you.
Your worship, no public notices, no notices of motion this evening, at this time, uh, I have a motion for adjournment. Moved by Counsel Kohler, seconded by Counsel Gibson.
Just before we close, I will say thank you to everybody tonight, it was an adventure for me to be up here at the chair with everybody and it was. I think everybody did a good job out there, so thank you very much, all in favor of the motion? Carried? Thank you, we're done, there's no.